The monthly board meeting of the Alacoa School District Board of Directors on March 10th, 2021 is now called to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Pew, may we have the roll call, please?
Excuse me, ma'am.
Oh.
Uh huh. Thank you.
You're welcome.
(laughing). Ms. Tori Dern Flanagan.
Yes.
Mrs. Tina Price Jeans.
Here.
Mrs. Janice Kane.
Present.
Mrs. Nicole Bible.
Here.
Ms. Catherine Calalala.
Here.
Mrs. Stephanie Mason. Ms. Sandra Gill.
Here.
Mr. Ezra Lo. All right, and Ms. Larita Stewart.
Here.
Dr. Carbo, may we have the sunshine, ma'am?
Yes, there was an executive session held last Tuesday, March 2nd, for personnel. No action to be taken this evening.
You want to do that?
Yes. And tonight, we have Mr. Dan Egan from VEBH Architects. A couple of years ago, one of his associates, Mr. Durkin, some of you may have met in a Buildings and Grounds meeting, came and spoke regarding the visitors' grandstand at the football stadium. So we are, we have reconvened the discussion. So, Mr. Egan is...
Hello.
Egan, I'm sorry.
Hi, John. Thank you, John.
Has joined us this evening and will be talking a little bit about the stadium and some of the things that could or can't be done.
Thank you for inviting me. I'm just a little shorter and grayer than my partner, Tom, who has just retired. So he's living the good life. And I'm happy to have some discussions about your stadium. And we have, over the last few years, taken a few looks at it, some engineers, of course, architects, and trying to look at the problem and to see how we could potentially solve that issue for you. What I just handed you is a few slides, just to sort of give you, I think, what our perspective is, and trying to solicit a little discourse with you about action moving forward. The first slide is just a quick snapshot of your current facility. And one of the big issues, it's a little bit more in doing a project like this, it's a little bit more than just demolishing the grandstands. That in itself is a relatively rudimentary thing. It's a little bit of a challenge because, of course, it's on the edge of the hill and there's a retaining wall there. And so the folks who would be demolishing, doing the demolishing work, would have to be very careful because they've got that precipice to work around. The thing I'm most concerned about isn't that, it's the logistics of how a contractor gets on and off the site during his work, what he has to do to prepare, what he might potentially do to disrupt your, the surrounding areas that you didn't really want to touch. And there are certain logistics that are just going to happen when you approach a project like this. Also come with that additional cost when you approach a project like this, things that are, go beyond just, you know, removing a grandstand. And I think those are the things that I think that we need to talk about to decide what the timeframe might potentially be for you, what the process of bidding would potentially be, and overall what your end, end goals might be financially also, because, of course, this is going to have some expense with it of significance. What you see here on the slide is just from the airplane view, if you take a look at it, I have some funky little arrows there. And we have Harding Avenue that comes right around past the site. The first thing we're looking for is how can we get dump trucks? There's going to be many dump trucks coming to the site to be able to take the refuse of the demolition off the site. So it's a train of trucks coming and going. They need to be able to get up and get relatively close to the grandstand, turn around, get their load filled, and then leave the site, and then another truck come in. So you can kind of imagine, if everybody's familiar with the size of a dump truck, they're big. And to maneuver them around and have a decent turning radius, and they do all the backing up and three-point turning and everything, it's going to take some space. Some, that space for turning around and operating is going to end up partially on your current field. So what would have to happen when we do these projects is the contractor would have to come in and he would have to lay down a temporary sort of accessway, temporary stone that would go on top of your current, a portion of your current field area, basically in a measured, careful way to minimize this disruption. But stone would have to be laid down to allow the trucks to not sink completely into the ground while they're doing the work. And as soon as the construction was done, the stone would be removed, and then there'd be soil brought back in, and then we would replace the field portions that are disturbed with sod to, you know, reclimate the whole situation. One of the challenges, of course, your topography challenge, as all of us are in Pennsylvania, and one of the big challenges is getting onto the platform, where you get onto the platform of the field, and how can we do it in a, in the way that is least disruptive? So from a bird's eye view, right away, you look and you say, oh, why can't we maybe get right there from Harding Avenue and just go straight to where we want to do the work? And that would be this sort of clear arrow here that's straight, back and forth arrow. Well, that's about a 17-foot difference or so, in my guesstimate, by standing there, going from the field down to the road. It's very steep. It's at least a one-to-one slope. So to do that, we would have to actually bring in a lot of soil and to bench it back. There's a telephone pole in the way that might be a little bit of a challenge. So I don't think that is a possibility that is financially viable. I think the best avenue is this sort of curvy, clear arrow, which is over by your entrance, your current entrance over there, that used to have the ticket, ticket booth and thing there. We would take down a portion of the fence and add a little bit of stone and regrade just a little bit to allow the trucks to come and go along there. They'd have to scooch by. I think we may, we may be able to do this without harming the backstop or the goalpost. There's a choice. We could, I think the contractors could decide to take that goalpost out, set it aside, and then reinstall it at the end of the project, just to make sure that no one, none of the trucks accidentally bumped into it. But you could run along that side of the end zone, it's where it's currently paved, and then make your swing around to be able to pick up the concrete pieces that were being demolished and then spin back off. Every contractor that I've talked to so far about this has a different way of doing demolition. And we do this a lot in school construction projects, build a new building, tear down an old one or a piece of an old one, things like that. And so estimating the work is very hard because each one of them has sort of a personal methodology that they like to go about doing the work. I talked to three contractors and they gave me wildly different pricing. And of course, there are no bid documents for them to look at to actually quantify things. I did a calculation of the square footage of the concrete so they get an idea of how much is there. But real pricing, really hard pricing, is going to come by them actually being onsite and looking at the documents and seeing what we're requiring of them. But we have a general cost estimate that goes around $100,000 to do the demolishing of the concrete grandstand. And it's, the cost is relatively significant, and, and the real reason is, concrete's pretty easy on its own. The problem is, these are cantilevered bleachers, and so they are full of rebar, big rebar. Some of it you can see exposed on the underside. When you walk back there, you've seen the concrete pieces have come down. That has to be cut during the process of the demolition, so they can't just easily, you know, jackhammer a piece and then lift it carefully away. It's all tied together with these giant pieces of steel rod that each one of them has to be cut. And each contractor has a different methodology for how they do that and different kinds of equipment. So you're going to get prices when we bid the job that are going to vary. But being competitive, you'll probably get about 10 bidders or so. This will be a pretty, a pretty big job that you'll see a lot of competition on, which would be good from a pricing point of view. I'm estimating currently right now, without having civil engineering look at the, how much stone and things like that preliminarily, I'm estimating that we've got somewhere in the neighborhood of additional labor and materials for reclamation, putting in stone and taking out stone, that kind of thing, of about another $100,000. So I predict that on bid day, we could see numbers anywhere from 200,000 to 500,000. Somewhere in that range is where the numbers are going to be. Obviously, you're going to be looking at low bid number in the competitive public bidding scenario that we always deal with, lowest responsible bidder. So that's my preliminary look at, at things. There's a lot of complications that maybe we don't think about until you actually are the person that's trying to figure it out. The light standards are going to stay. And so the bleachers are built around the light standards. And even there's light standards outside of the area of the bleachers, and I kind of pointed one of them out. You can, I put out light standards to remain. There's one that's down there by the old concession stand. I would have liked to be able to turn in that area and minimize, you know, further minimize any field disruption, but the light standard keeps you from doing that. So it's going to be a little bit of a surgical scenario to get things done. My second thing was an old image that, from Google, which is to show the slope that we're dealing with along Harding. And it's, it's a little bit easier now without that ticket booth there to be able to get in and out for the contractor. But I, I just don't think that going and avoiding that direction, that current entrance, I don't think we can do it because of the slope that's beyond. So that's just a little bit of conversation about quick thoughts on methodology, and I wanted to open it up for conversation with you about, you guys have probably thought about this for a long time and had discourse, and I haven't been involved in any of that.
What's the expected time for a literal payment to do the job?
I'm thinking about four months. I've talked to different people. The guys who give me a quick answer says that they can do it in less than three months. The problem is, that's probably perfect weather conditions, and that probably doesn't take into account the amount of pre-work that has to be done and maybe the amount of reclamation work that would have to be done. So I'm thinking about four months. And the, really, the only way you're going to be able to get it done this summer is to push home football games further into the fall so that you can probably gain the month of September as a part of the process. There's another thing that's important to understand also about that is, the only way to get the field back immediately is to sod the portions that are disrupted. But sod, they, they ask that sod has two growing seasons, which would be, let's say, the fall and the spring, and then at the end of the spring, you'd be able to fully use the sod like a normal football field. You guys are probably used to watching Steeler games where it's had a really tough season and they get into playoffs, and now they've had to replace sections with sod. And during the game, you see that they, sometimes the sod slides and they get big clumps and things like that because it hasn't had time to grow and connect to anything. And so there's a possibility that if you, if we do the job now and you have activity on the field, those areas that get sodded may be damaged and might possibly damage your investment. So my alternative solution on time is to wait until this football season is done, do all of our planning during this time rather than being rushed at all, and put the project out for a bid early in, in the summer maybe, or at the end of the summer at the worst, and get good pricing, consider, is this, like, can we afford this and everything like that for sure? And then we have plenty of time for the contractors to be prepared as soon as the football season is done. They can do the project over the winter. It's a little bit easier sometimes. If we had a great cold winter like this year, it was wonderful for construction because it froze the ground. So it was great for all of the construction vehicles on our project sites running around, not getting bogged down. But that would give you two growing seasons because we get the spring growing season for the sod and the summer growing season. There's a lot of watering to do, but by the time football started next summer, not this coming summer, but the following summer, you, your investment would be secure. So I'd say that's the safe way to go, but the other can be done.
So how much, if they would play on that, that sod would have to be replaced?
Or repaired.
How much are we looking at cost-wise if we're not about to replace it?
And that's the question I can't answer because I'm not sure, I know you don't play very many games there, but it could turn out that you, you know, much of the sod was damaged. If you just have a few games on it, you could have a problem.
Okay, a question I have is about the retaining wall. Is that wall weakened or is it weak to be torn down to?
No, actually, the retaining wall is in pretty fantastic shape. In 2016, you had a civil engineer actually did an assessment of the wall. The wall's in good shape. I walked along it with the superintendent and your facility director. Other than the fence that's there is in bad shape, and it would come down anyway as a part of the demolition and have to be replaced. The wall itself looks good. It doesn't look like it's settled at all from the top. Most of those walls move over time, so it's built well. I don't believe that it's going to be damaged as a part of the construction by taking the foundations and things out. They're far enough away from the wall. And that's actually why the wall, why the bleachers are built the way they are, is the foundation, if the wall is here, the bleachers slope like this, and they cantilever, for at least a third of the bleachers are cantilevered. And that's so that the foundations of the bleachers can be far away from the wall and not disrupt, you know, not push too much on the wall and create, create problems over time. So they did a nice job originally. It's just seen its day now, you know, it's hard to keep that concrete.
So we're basically working on just tearing, just the seating part right there. All of that.
Yeah, everything that, the, the seating is basically one monolithic piece of construction, and its foundational areas, underneath that, there's a few things underneath there that would go with it, and there's sidewalk underneath there that would all, also go, so you can put it back to grass. The only other thing is to work around the lights, and the electrical lines are all interwoven inside the concrete foundations of the existing bleacher system. So we would disconnect the wiring and re, after it's all done, rerun, run new conduits to each one of the light fixtures and pull new wire. So there's a little bit of an expense for that. I'm guessing that's somewhere in the neighborhood of $8,000 to do that portion of it.
Oh, underground?
Yeah.
Because, like you said before, is, is this deep down?
Well, it's inside the concrete. So those bleachers have rebar in them.
Right.
And that's what's helping, you know, keep that concrete together and have it strength.
And, and, yeah.
Yeah. All the contractor guys say, oops, all the contractor guys say, no big deal. But as a planner, I, I find good thoughts now save trouble later. And we tend to get ourselves in trouble sometimes when we think things are too easy. Yes?
So it's my understanding that you are doing, like, you're going through, like, well, I was just saying, you're going around that way, you're just doing the bleachers and that area. What about the field itself? Not touching that?
Well, that's where, if you look on the diagram on that first page, that's where I was kind of explaining that there's a certain portion of the field that is going to be damaged. And so I put a little blue dash line on there. You can kind of see, everything on the bleacher side of that blue dash line, I think, is going to be disrupted. That's a, and I think we can try to keep the contractors and tell them, hey, you know, if you go beyond that, you should, at the very least, assume that you're going to have to be reclaiming the field in that area. If you go beyond that, you're going to have to handle that, too. And I would assume that most contractors would be real careful because every inch of that that they disturb is reclamation costs that they would have to pay for. And they're either going to put it in their bid and risk not being a low bidder, or, you know, take, you know, minimize it and be careful. That would be, if it was me doing it, I'm basically drawing a line and assuming that I can do this, and I've got a methodology to do it, and I'm going to try to avoid, you know, disrupting too much. Does that make sense? There's a lot of little things, but all those kinds of things usually, once you guys say, yes, this is what you'd like to do, I would come back and talk about all those little details. There needs to be a survey done. It's not a super expense, but there needs to be a survey so that we can do a regrading plan for after the stadium grandstand comes out, we have to infill with soil and regrade it and send the stormwater away from the field and get that all seeded and, and put back proper. And so you need to have an understanding of what to do. That'll be a part of the municipal approval process also, is managing the stormwater and the change for that. And then I don't think that there is any hazardous materials. The only thing that I can think of is testing, you guys, I believe, have already tested for asbestos-containing materials and found none. I would probably double-check things like lead paint, given the age of the facility. We may have to double-check that. Testing for that stuff is very minimal. It's like $300 a test, so that's a quick win to find out, and hopefully, you know, you won't have any issues with that. It's an outdoor facility, and usually the mitigation of that isn't a big deal either. It's mostly about what dump you have to take it to when it has less lead paint involved.
So whoever the contractor would be, they would be responsible for rewiring the lighting system?
Yes, we would specify, our electrical engineers would specify all of the cabling and everything that they would have to do, and then that would all be in their bid. So you would end up with a bid that would include all of that, all of those items. If the bid for, I'm assuming, we have separation of primes in Pennsylvania, we would probably bid the electrical as a separate, a separate fee. Anything around $10,000 or more, I definitely recommend that you, you know, don't have the general contractor doing that kind of stuff. If you can keep the demolition contractor focused on demolition, then you'll get more purist guys who do demolition straight up. But once we start adding other kind of disciplines to their, to them, then we might end up more in the general contracting realm. Although I did talk to a general contractor who said he was definitely interested in bidding the project, and he had a methodology that he thought he could put forth and be successful. So you'll see a, a number of different kinds of contractors, probably.
Pete, is that going to cause an issue with the union because they have to do electrical work?
It should not.
No, not when it's a project.
Yeah, it's prevailing wage anyway, so it should be okay.
So, from my understanding, you're going to get a demolition contractor and an electric?
Electrical, yeah. I think that's all you will need to do. There isn't plumbing associated with the project, and there aren't any HVAC portions of the project. So just those two prime contracts, led, of course, by the demolition contractor, which we'll end up calling the general contractor by contract as the lead contractor. So that stuff's, as John probably can advise you, is relatively standard. That's sort of the easy part, for me, anyway. The harder part, I think, for us together is finally defining the scope, because there'll be still many decisions. How high of fencing to put back? What kind of fencing? When the contractors drive over the asphalt portions in the end zone and on the side, should we just put that back as grass when we're done, or should we put that back as asphalt? Should it be as much as there, as there currently or less? This is a lot of design decisions to make, and it's not as much as when we do a building. But there's still quite a few things to talk about. At our company, we don't make those decisions for you. We try to bring you the information and the options, and then we talk about them together and come to some kind of consensus.
So if, if it was, if the decision was made to start this year, you'd have to start, like, now?
Last month. Yeah. We needed to go right away because there's quite a few things that need to get done, just as setting up, getting a surveyor, as an example. You know, that's not a, there aren't surveyors just sitting around with an empty calendar right now, so.
And what about, like, would permits be needed or anything like that?
Permits will be required. It's usually a pretty simple thing from a demolition point of view, especially for you guys, I think, because of the location. But the biggest issue, I think, is the number of trucks that will be estimated to be running on the road, and will that cause damage to demissible streets? And will there have to be some kind of discussion about that? That's usually what we find in big demolition projects.
Trying to do it now, we're questioning against the clock, and it's going to be an issue come football season because we're taking a risk of having to have it redone if we left on Friday.
Yeah, the turf, for sure. And there is some risk, what happens if we have quite a bit of bad weather and it slows things down and it goes a little bit longer, and now you need to move more games? I, I do not want to be standing up here reporting to you that we have to somehow tell the community that they can't have their home, their first home football game or something like that. I don't want you to have to face that, standing in the grocery store line and those kinds of things that you, I know that you have, you have to answer to the public and explain things. So if it's okay, I would ask for the, the schedule to be just, you know, shifted a little bit.
And you said if it was, the ideal time would be to start in the winter of 2022?
Yes.
21, 22?
I'd try to have, let's say, bid the project, no later than end of August, go out for bid. That's a good time, right after the end of the summer. Contractors are finishing up all that crazy work that happens in school, construction in the summertime, and we could bid the project in September. You'll have numbers to talk about in October, and, and then you could get award contracts, and I'd say you'd have demolition starting by Christmas time at the, at the latest. It's probably, I would look for us to try to be done with our work by the end of June, and that gives you time to look at the bidding options. Sometimes we build in second bidding scenarios so that, like, why do we always have to be last minute, right? So maybe we receive bids a month earlier than you would originally need for sure to have them. And if the numbers come in unsatisfactorily, and maybe there's contractor input through bidding and everything like that, and you decide to modify the contract and go out for bid one more time to get a lower number, that's a possibility, too. Although I think the, there's not a lot of moving parts here, so rebidding probably isn't going to get you much savings. But anyway, I'd probably ask to be able to come here- I'd probably ask to be able to come here over the next three months and work on the decisions that have to be made, and have hard drawings, and look at the, actually quantify how much stone, and have some contractors actually do some preliminary bid numbers for us, so I can give you detailed budget numbers rather than, I'll say, my architect guesses, which are pretty good, but this is a one-off kind of project. You know, this is a very unique project. We build schools and campuses all the time, and you get used to the fact that a school costs around two hundred dollars a square foot. If it's a big enough thing, you, you understand. But when projects are really small like this and specialized, it's really hard to compare. So one of the comparisons I have is a project, a concrete parking garage in Pittsburgh that just got demolished. They opened the bids a year ago, and, just to give you an idea of the range of that project, there were ten bidders. The low bid was six hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars, and the high bid was two point two million. So, different contractors with different methodologies and different worries. Obviously, the low guy had some kind of method and, you know, really wanted the job, but the second low bidder was just over seven hundred thousand, so he wasn't that far off from the low bidder, so they ended up awarding to the low bidder, so. But you can see, those kind of projects can really vary. If it was a school project, it wouldn't be like that. We'd have ten general contractor bids, and they'd all be really close to each other, because everyone can easily estimate drywall and flooring and things like that. It's very common thing, so.
So, what are you saying, expect to start out?
Just the bleachers themselves. So just the concrete bleachers themselves. That's the, I got several numbers, some were higher, none were lower. They all, some people said a hundred, I got two other people that said a hu, somewhere between a hundred and twenty and a hundred and fifty. And if you take it off at about, the number that I got from several people was ten dollars a square foot for demolition of something like that. It's about two dollars a square foot for just demolishing a sidewalk. But this is far more complicated than that, so several people told me ten dollars a square foot, and when you calculate it, it's about eight thousand square feet. And that doesn't count your, the thickness of it and everything like that, to give you an idea. And so just that basic, you know, thing, doesn't include trucking, manipulation, and things like that of the site, so I would tell you to easily double that number to be safe. And as we go along here, let's say through June, we can update the numbers with as realistic as I can give you without bidding them, and actually give you costs for, this is how much stone, this is how much it costs for stone, those are all really, you know, regular things. And then I can have contractors actually weigh in on some of our drawings, so you can get a preliminary idea. And if those numbers look like they are beyond the two hundred and two hundred and fifty thousand number, then you can put the brakes on at any time. You're in control all the time. It's your money, and we're just here to try to help you.
Yeah, I was going to ask you, you, what you said earlier was your best guesstimate right now was approximately two hundred thousand dollars.
Yes.
And that's what everything?
Always, always goes a little bit higher.
Higher, yeah.
Yeah.
I just heard that, two hundred thousand.
Yeah, here with two hundred and fifty.
Every job they do on here is separate from, like, you know, charge for each thing they do, like removal, their building of the, the cement.
Yeah, it's like going to a grocery store for contracting, when you think about it that way. One shelf has grading on it, another shelf has, you know, stone backfill, another shelf has topsoil, and then they just look at our drawings and calculate the quantities. And then, I think that levels of difficulty come into play here that are maybe a little bit unusual. Working in the air, you know, we've got to find a way to demolish the concrete that's floating up above that retaining wall without dropping it over the side. That's going to take some cleverness and some care. I asked several guys about that, and the first guy said, no problem, our guys will get up there, blah, 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 cut some holes, and we'll, we'll take it down without a problem. Another guy was very nervous about it and said that he would really want to think about it before he gave a good answer, so. It isn't just a straightforward thing, so it makes it kind of special.
Yeah, my football player, maybe he can answer a question, or you could talk to him about the town.
He could probably talk about what it's like to play on a brand-new sodded field and whether that's a good idea.
Where our field is, I love to stand with him, so repairing the field now or the day is, I have one question. How much, would it be cheaper to repair the visitor's side?
That was my question.
Well, I'm going to say yes and no. I think it would be less expensive to repair it, dependent upon how much you're, how far you go with the repairs, and then, but it will be chronic, so you will have to regularly repair it. The repairs won't last. I think that's the challenge here, is that you've basically got something sitting there that's been exposed to the weather for a long time, and now it's had significant damage. We can do, like some parking lots do, or parking garages do, where they do patching and things like that. They've got some nice, different kinds of cement that can do those kinds of things. Do you need the bleachers? I guess that's what, I didn't, I was under the assumption that you don't have the need for that many people in the stadium.
I would assume that both sides would come at the same time, and say, we have this soon.
I, I didn't think so. I thought, I thought the home stands might be older.
So since this side is being, we can't use it, is the home side the same way? Do the whole side need repair, or does the whole side need to be along this way?
I don't think so, but we didn't walk on the home side. That hasn't been a focus of the conversation, so I, I don't really want to give you a straight answer on that one.
I mean, it's in better condition than the visitors'.
Is it better?
It's not perfect, but it's in better.
Who, who was the, who deemed the visitor's side, like, was it, we can't use the visitor's side, who made that decision?
In the summer of 2016, when Mr. Burley, supervisor of Boatings and Grounds, he met with myself and the board at the time down there, and it was decided that, at that time, that no more money would be put into replacing that side, and we would close it until further notice.
So we had to do that side for?
Five seasons, five seasons, yes.
It was more of a safety reason, like, that we made that decision? Because of the rebar and stuff sticking out? We didn't want somebody getting hurt, so that's why we closed that section down and stopped using it?
But you can fix it up. I mean, if you just take some money and a little bit of time.
So it would be cheaper?
I think it would be marginally cheaper, yes.
I'm sorry?
I think it would definitely be less expensive. Yes.
That's a possibility.
Absolutely.
So is that something that we can take as an option and get a quote on someone? Like, can we get a quote on somebody, like, estimating lots of people to be prepared to demo and what?
We can do that. Our structural engineer has done many of these concrete repairs for things that are the most, I keep referencing parking garages, but it's very similar. And he's good at that. I can have him come out and take a look at it and do an estimate as to what he thinks it would cost to do a full repair. And there's no, there's no ADA access and things. You have code issues with the bleachers also, which makes it a little bit of a challenge. You may have to look at some of those things to see what the modifications would be required to meet the Americans with Disabilities Act. And there's handrails, railings, all those kinds of things would have to be a component of that, too, but I can categorize all those things for you.
When it was first put up, didn't, it should have been up to quote with the ADA of what?
No, because it was built well before the ADA was ever, ADA came in the nineties, this is far older than that.
So that wouldn't be much to put up the rail, because it's something so handy.
Uh, no, it's quite a bit more than, you'll, uh.
I think there is a rail.
Yeah.
I'll get it ready Wednesday.
Yeah, there's all sorts of things about the amount of area that you know, required for seating and aisles and everything that, no, it does not meet code, and will take a little bit of work. But can it be done? Absolutely.
Mr. Ingen, and you said if you did the repairs on the visitor's side, was I, am I clear in that you said it would just be a short-term fix?
It is, it, you're still going to have the constant maintenance. Your, the areas that you don't repair that are original, in a certain amount of time, will start to do the same thing that the other areas that you already did repair. It's, you know, just like anything, it's, it's just, you know, it's a lived-a-good-life, but it's, you know, starting to erode away, and so I'm, I'm not saying that you would have to spend the same amount of money as you would on the first repair, but you would have something to manage over time, probably on an annual basis, as peepses fall off in new areas and things like that. That's, we've, end up with this a lot. I'm working at Norwin, and they have the same exact problem that you do. Theirs is far worse, though, because it's their home grandstand, and it's full of all their concessions and everything that are underneath it, and they're inside those rooms. The pieces of concrete are falling, and they're, they're struggling to do the same thing as you are, but they have to keep it for right now and try to get through. But very similar issues.
So we compare the time, the years, the fitless fits, as opposed to getting new? Can you give me?
Yes, yeah. I, I think that would be the whole point, right? We'll try to give you an assessment as to how much it would cost to fix it up, and I'll ask for a life cycle costing analysis, basically. You can compare the first cost, and then you can compare maybe going forward, how much we can predict you might have to annually spend, or biannually, or something like that. It'll be guessing, but I think we can, we can do that.
Can you predict also, relative to the home side? If the home side, okay, ten years from now, the home side would be the same thing, but five years from now, the other side would be the same thing?
We could, we could look at the home side, too. If that's, if that's what you'd like to do, we'd be happy to do that.
So if, let's just say, we did, that we repaired, would the rebar have been taken out for the days, and then slates, or were they just stripped and the rebar has already there?
If we repaired it, essentially, what's there would stay. It's internal to the concrete. It's kind of funny to look at, but I'll try to describe it. The areas that have spalled off, that have exposed rebar, what they do is they come in, they treat the rebar to try to stop any further decay, and then they actually build a custom box to basically go over the top of the spalled area, and then it is hydraulically, pressure is applied hydraulically with a special kind of concrete that has some epoxy formula to it. And so when you're done, you see these, they give extra amounts of concrete to, you know, fill in that gap, so you see these weird little boxes that cover the areas everywhere you do that, around corners, and trying to protect it and keep it, you know, allow it to, you know, last longer, so.
Would you, would it be safe to say that with, if we went to repair, would the proper maintenance get to last longer?
Yes, the, I think the biggest problem to doing these kinds of things is most school districts don't have resources. They don't apply enough money to capital improvements already, because we're all budget, you know, stressing budget. And so, just like the pavement in a parking lot, it tends to go longer than it really should, and next thing you know, you'll really have to replace the base as well. But if it would have been milled and resurfaced at the appropriate time, we could have salvaged it for much longer and spent less money, so. But most school districts have, you know, there's a challenge to be able to, you know, essentially, every year, you should do something. That's what it boils down to. Yeah, and, and so what we tend to do in our, in our homes, as well as here in the school, is you only have a fixed amount of money, generally, and new things come up, so you've got to try to, oh, let's try to make it to next year.
So if we repair, instead of tear down, would that affect the union and our?
No.
No. Yeah, you'd still bid it the same way, so it'd just be different contractors doing the work. Did I make it more confusing? I'm sorry.
No, not at all. Not at all.
Any other questions?
Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Let me know.
Be in touch.
Clapping, I love it. Have a good night, folks.
Okay, recognition of visitor, visit. The Alacopa Board of Directors welcomes residents of the school district and commends you for attending the meeting this evening. We also gladly invite your comments and questions. At this time, local residents who would like to address the board will be invited to approach the podium. You will be asked to state your name and address, and you may speak for up to three minutes. This public participation session is normally limited to about thirty minutes. Prior to adjournment at the end of the meeting, the residents will be offered another opportunity to pose questions on items that pertain to the school district. These comments will likewise be limited to three minutes. The board may respond immediately to general questions or comments if appropriate, but will often instruct the superintendent, the business man, administrator, I'm sorry, or the solicitor to do further research and report back to the board or the resident. If you have specific questions, the board will try its best to respond either at the meeting or shortly thereafter. The board wants to ensure that it is fully informed before responding, and so if your questions are not addressed immediately, this does not indicate a lack of interest on the board's part. Finally, to protect the rights to privacy, the board cannot respond to complaints or comments about specific individuals, employees, or students in a public session. Once again, at this time, local residents who would like to address the board will be invited to approach the podium. All right, let's talk administration, minutes of the February tenth and February seventeenth, 2021 meeting. All right, and so, recommendation to approve the minutes of the February tenth and February seventeenth, 2021 board meeting, and we don't need no recommendations, any questions, any discussion on those minutes, no. All right, the community development block grant, this, I'm sorry?
Yes, we may have to postpone this based on the conversation.
All right, all right, so this is not an action request to the admin.
Until we decide to tear it down or attempt to repair it. I mean, we don't want to apply for this grant.
You don't have to apply for it?
Oh, it's due March thirty-first, but we could.
I think you should still apply.
I think you should.
I'm okay with that.
Don't you think you should still apply?
Yeah, I think you should still apply for that.
Okay, all right. I'm sorry, I jumped ahead. I should let you read it, I'm sorry.
All right, recommendation to approve submitting an application to the Beaver County Community Development Block Grant Program to raise the visitor's grandstand at the football stadium. Any discussion?
Yeah, so Pete, is there a certain amount you can apply for?
I think it's just a matter of trying to get the numbers from him, approximation numbers, and putting him into the application.
So you need, you know you need at least two hundred and fifty thousand, at least?
Yes.
So.
I hope it's a competitive bid, there's no limit on it, but this is a competitive bid.
So if you apply for, for the grandstand, you can only use it towards that?
Yes. Yes.
But you do have to, you do have to put in what you need to budget in, right? You have to put in?
Yes, we have to have figures to put in there, yes.
So when we get those numbers, we need to go on the high end, right?
Yes.
So he was saying like it could be this number, but we need to go more towards?
The high end.
The high end of it. Do you think he would be able to get you some sort of numbers?
Yeah, I think he, he kind of has them now, some of the numbers he was, I'll get them from him.
Okay.
Well, um, the person before was talking about it being, uh, demolition was a hundred dollars, a hundred ten thousand dollars.
Well, you got to remember.
We didn't include all that when he was telling us, huh?
Well, you got to remember, alls we, alls we did was just put the bid out, we didn't have any of the specifications that he talked about or any. Uh, of the, of the details that he took, it was just strictly just to tear it down, there weren't any, and that was four or five years ago. So, um, obviously.
Yeah.
Things have gone up since then too.
And that's why we didn't do it back then, because.
We didn't have anybody to lead the project.
We didn't have the specifications to do, for the project.
So do you need to change the wording of it, so we don't have, or we have to come back if we decide to just do repairs?
What's that?
Oh, yeah.
Do you need to change the wording, instead of raise, do it like raise slash?
Well, yeah, you can put in there, uh, to demolish, uh, or.
Repair.
Or refurbish.
Okay.
To refurbish or demolish.
Right.
I believe that's our writing two separate grants here, make sure you have the writing grant, demolish and, and apply to, to repair.
I will.
Check it tomorrow.
Yeah.
All right, so that's going to be two separate grants, yes?
It could be.
It have to be written possibly two different ways, so you'd have to make a decision on which way.
Which way you're going to do.
Do you think that maybe he can come up with some type of estimate before next week?
I'll be calling tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah, but what she's saying is we would have, and then if we didn't, if we decided to demolish and not repair them, we can't do anything with that money.
Well, no, that's why I was asking Pete that, because if, if we have a better decision on the comparison next week.
Oh, you mean numbers for demolish or repair?
She'll know by the end of month before she has to spend it, which one is next.
Gotcha.
Anything else, ladies? All right, the metal psychiatric center, um, recommendation to approve letter of agreement with the metal psychiatric center for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. And twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year, any discussion?
If any student is, uh, placed there, uh, part of their education, the school district would get billed sixty-seven dollars per day for that. That's what we're approving, is if a student gets placed there, we're going to pay them sixty-seven dollars a day. It's attached.
Is this impatient?
We had.
I don't understand.
Pardon me?
Already going to school, is it impatient and they're going to school impatient?
Yes, they're, they're an impatient.
Impatient?
Yes.
Is fifty-seven like the average cost or?
Uh.
Or like is it just, is it private?
They're all different and it's.
Chargers pay a certain price, public schools pay a certain price?
I'm not sure, all the different psychiatrics have different costs. That's, their cost is sixty-seven dollars.
So our students typically, is this where we typically house our students here?
It's, no, it's, I'm, I don't know if we've ever had anybody, I'm sure we've had in the past, but just in case someone does get placed there.
We've had that, we've had contracts before, I don't know if it has a place in there, but we've had contracts.
I, I, I'm, I'm sure we've had at least one, the fact that we even have the contract, so I'm sure.
Okay.
And we wouldn't place them, we wouldn't place them there, a doctor would place them there, we wouldn't place them there. Or the court system.
All right, the school calendars for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. All right, any questions about the school calendar, does anybody even have that in their possession?
It's, do you want to talk to us for next week? Okay.
Yeah, but we typically don't grab our attachments. What do you say?
We'll have a hard copy for you next week, or I'll send it home on Friday. The, the first, uh, three in-service days. August twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh, and the first day of school is August thirtieth, which is a Monday. Uh, the last day of school is June ninth and graduation and the last in-service day would be June tenth. So pretty, uh, close to what we've done in the past. Consistent.
So why'd they change graduation to the second Friday as opposed to the first Friday?
Or?
Graduation.
Uh, it's been both through the years, it kind of depends on when the, where the calendar falls and if we start school. Early in August or, or later in August, that's usually what the term is.
Who, who changed to the second Friday and why was it changed, is what I'm asking?
Uh, it was just the way the calendar was done.
Yeah, I understand.
I mean, I, I do it, I'm not sure with the administration, then I have to sit down with Mrs. Lindner because the union has to approve it also.
So they approved it, have moved it to the second Friday?
That part never came into discussion, but they were okay with it, they were okay with it.
I'm, I'm just saying because we normally have, graduation has always fell the first week of June, I'm just asking when did it change and why did it change to the second?
It's been done both ways, some years it's been the first, some years it's been the second.
Well, this year we're starting really late.
It's the second this year.
That's the problem.
It's the second this year.
They start late?
We're starting August thirtieth, normally we start the twenty, anywhere from the twenty-second to the twenty-fifth. This year we're starting on the thirtieth, so that pushes everything back.
But the seniors do, they do, um, March, they usually get out in May still?
Well, it depends on when the last week of finals, it could be the week of Memorial Day or, or it could be the, the previous week. It's usually a week or two before the others, usually a week before the other students are done.
Exactly.
Not two weeks, a week.
Is there a reason we're starting so late?
No, that was just what we decided.
I mean, no, we were supposed to start on the twenty-fifth this year, last year we started on the twenty-second.
Last year we, we postponed it because of COVID and.
This school year, we were supposed to start on the twenty-fifth, but we postponed it.
Yeah.
The year before we started on the twenty-second, I just wondered.
I don't think it was that early.
One year we started on the twenty-second, I'm telling you.
Plus, I mean, we are going to June eleventh this year.
Yeah.
Um, and we do want to have some summer programs to help the students, so that was one of the reasons why we decided to start.
Start later, okay.
Plus Pete, like a lot of the schools started going back earlier to get more instructional time before keystones and stuff, right?
Some, yeah.
Yeah, because I can remember when I was in school, we didn't start till after Labor Day.
I, I know.
You know, till mid-June.
Um, the, the calendars I've seen so far, anybody starting from the twenty-fourth or twenty-fifth through the thirty-first?
Yeah.
So we're, we're in the middle there.
No, no, I'm not, I just knew there was a reason for it.
Any other questions? All right, tax parcels. Recommendation to approve Gerard Carey to purchase three sixteens, Falden Street. And the amount, and the bid amount of one thousand seven hundred and two dollars. And Craig Doswell and Janelle Robinson to purchase three oh five third Avenue and the bid amount of one thousand six hundred and seven dollars. Okay, finance. Financial reports, recommendation for the fall reports for January, February, twenty twenty-one.
Hard copies are at your tables for you.
Any questions about these financial reports?
Me, up in, uh, reasonable?
That's why you have copies now, so you have a week's book from before next meeting, we go.
Can you take these out next time, can you take them or go to a doctor?
What's the question?
Their numbers and stuff?
Make the numbers over the door.
It's different with me, my, I just don't want, um, have a, a doctor and then rest them and go to the.
Which in that, which pages are you referring to, Sandra?
On, um, in, in revenue summaries.
That comes straight out of my accounting packet, I'm not entirely sure if that's possible, but I can check.
Or, or when the copies are made, maybe I can try to darken it.
Kind of hard to see. That's the only thing that will aid that.
Yes.
I think you can take them.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay.
I have a quick question, on this Portnoy collection. So for January, are these collected from homeowners and businesses? Or is that just homeowners?
The Portnoy is everybody, that's anybody who owns, property owner, business and, um, a person.
And then how come it, how come like some, like July it was fifty-eight thousand and then August it was thirty-two?
It's just based on their collection efforts, um, when their money's coming in.
So in January, we got thirty-seven thousand dollars in taxes.
And, and delinquent taxes from Portnoy, yes.
Delinquent, that's delinquent?
Yes.
This Portnoy is our delinquent tax collector, yes.
Okay, so what would you say? What would you say comes in, in taxes not delinquent?
Well, if you look at the page right before that, it tells you.
Deposits?
Two, page three.
Deposits?
No, page three, two pages before that, top.
Okay.
On the top it says real estate tax net, sixty-nine thousand, four forty-two. Are you looking at February or January, I'm sorry?
All right, this is, this is report of taxes collected January twenty twenty-one?
All right, I have February, okay, so it's still page three, it's the top left. Real estate tax net, one, one hundred thirty-seven thousand, one hundred ninety-seven dollars and twenty-two cents. So the city of Faldacopa is our current tax collector and that's what collections they collect for us for the month of January.
And then you add that thirty-seven thousand into that?
I mean, so it's a hundred and thirty-seven.
Yeah.
And then the thirty-seven from Portnoy is an additional, so roughly one seventy-five, one eighty.
Okay. And is that like an average you get per month?
It really varies.
Sometimes it may vary.
So your local tax collection is a lot higher in the fall, because that's when tax bills go out, that's when they're getting their discounts, then it dwindles off through the end of the year. Uh, Portnoy is kind of the same, they have high ones and low ones based on, um, when they're doing their mailings for collections. And, you know, when the people are getting tax refunds and things like that where they have extra cash payable.
So is the total, what's the two hundred and four thousand, two hundred and twenty-five?
That's the total of all collections, it's, it's your current local tax collection, it's your delinquent tax collection, it's your EIT tax, your merchantile tax. Um, all the collections that Berkhammer does and it's your, um, your Beaver County. Real estate, Beaver County.
So you get, say approximately, I'm just going by January. Two hundred and forty thousand dollars in taxes monthly?
The total for, for the month of January is two hundred and four, and then the total for the month of February is thirty-six.
No, I mean with this two hundred and four thousand.
Uh-huh.
And then with the thirty-seven thousand.
That's all included, that, everything is included in that.
Oh, in the two hundred and four. So would you say that's an average of what you get monthly in taxes, no?
No, because if you look at February, it's only thirty-six.
Okay.
It just, it swings based on collections.
Okay. So that's our tax base?
Yes, yes, that, so when you, when you see the budget, what I'm projecting for your earned income tax collection, your merchantile collection. Your local tax collection, about those million dollars for your local tax, fifty thousand for your EIT. That's what all this is tied back to in the budget.
Okay.
When we go, when I go to show you the budget, I'll show you what I mean, like where it's tying back to.
Did we discuss in the meeting, maybe I wasn't there, but did we ask to have like, um, like where it says? Supplies, like receipts?
You're asking for copies and these are all the copies of all the checks.
Now, what does this for Mars?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I don't know, yeah, yeah, still just.
Um, Mars Food District, so general ledger?
What month?
Seven page.
Somebody at Mars Youth Home?
It's in February.
A student was at Mars Youth Home and Mars Area School District is the one who provides the education, so they, they bill us.
So we had to pay Mars, is that what you're saying?
Yes, because they provide the education.
Yeah, it's just like paying a charter school or whatever.
So does the board find out before they go? Like, cause I don't think no one.
We, Mars Youth Home, that, that would be another court order or a doctor order, we wouldn't, we, we don't place them there.
No, I didn't say place them, but like, I just, just didn't know, saw it here. You don't know either?
Did we, um, we receive some of the students back from over at Bain Academy?
What's the question?
Did we receive students, did we have returning of students from Bain Academy back out?
Have some students return? Yeah, there's students that return.
They return?
I mean, not everybody, but, I mean, there's, you may get five back, you may have three go or vice versa.
So that's just like a temporary, um?
No, Bain Academy, that's parent choice, if, if they're accepted, if they're accepted.
Oh.
How many came back?
Oh, I'm just saying, some years, some kids come back, some may leave.
Okay, I thought she, did you ask?
I think she.
What did you say, you asked him if some kids came back, is that you're talking about?
Yeah, I know we had this, someone had mentioned before that we had, uh, some of the kids come back from our Bain Academy, but that.
You mean for this school here, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I wouldn't know, this year I wouldn't know, but I'm just saying, this, my experience is, is as the principal there, sometimes you may get. Four or five students back, you may get one back, you may get ten back, but you may have three go or four go, every year it's different.
All right.
Any other questions? Okay, number two, dispersments. General fund dispersment is an amount of six, six hundred and seventy-seven thousand, I'm sorry, six hundred and seventy-seven thousand, five hundred and, six hundred and seventy-seven. Yeah, six hundred and seventy-seven, five hundred and seventy dollars and eighty-two cents for March twenty twenty-one. General fund ratifications is an amount of one million, five hundred and twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars and forty-four cents. For January and February twenty twenty-one. Cafeteria fund dispersment is an amount of sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and eighty-three dollars and seventy-six cents for March twenty twenty-one. Cafeteria fund dispersment is an amount of sixty-three thousand eight hundred and eighty-three dollars and seventy-six cents for March twenty-twenty-one. Do you have your attachments? Okay, number three, BBIU budget twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two recommendation to approve the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two BVIU general operating budget by the Alacopa School District. The budget total is one million four hundred and ninety thousand two hundred and thirty-one dollars. This is a decrease of a hundred and seventeen dollars. The district contribution is five thousand three hundred thirty-one dollars and thirty cents. This is an increase of sixty-five dollars and sixty-three cents. And then as we pass.
Final question on that. If their overall budget decreased, how come our costs increased?
I will find out.
That, that didn't make sense to me.
Number four, audit report recommendation, the audit report prepared by Mark C. Turnley. CPA for the Alacopa School District for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty.
Next week, uh, Mrs. Turnley will be here for a meeting and, uh, by Friday, we're supposed to have our audit report to send home. So you will have a couple of days to view it also. If I get it tomorrow, I'll send it home tomorrow.
All right, there's nothing to report for education and technology, athletics. Yeah, does use. All right, Ms. Gill?
Okay. Athletics?
Athletics, oh, okay. My mind's going, okay. Those, um, following spring sports coaches for the twenty-twenty-one season subject to the completion of the season and further subject to probation of salary in the event of a short season. Eli Madge, baseball, two thousand dollars. Jerry Suncie, baseball volunteer. Joseph, the city.
Plastity.
Who?
Plastity.
Plast. Okay, thank you. Baseball volunteer. Uh, Cardy Ayden, softball, two thousand. And for Sean Patrick, track and field, two thousand one hundred.
Any questions?
I've got a question.
Okay.
Okay, it says, uh, file text, but there's only one filed text and it doesn't belong to this group. Is there a reason why?
Let me see here.
We don't have theirs.
Uh, oh, I may mistake and that should not be attached.
But we should have nothing but their, we should be.
I mean, no, it's just, we got their clearances, so. I must have copied and pasted and forgot to take out the attachments.
They're just, last time we did.
What were you asking?
Are these just assistant coaches?
Yes, these are the assistants. I wrote myself a note that needs to be added.
Okay, there's nothing to report. Any, any other questions? Nothing to report from personnel building and grounds?
Recommendation to approve purchasing of Kuboto? That's not here.
That's not.
Kabuta. Kabuta tractor from Murphy Family, Inc. for fifteen thousand seven hundred and thirteen dollars and twenty cents. This is a costar's price. Action's requested on this name.
This was to, to, um, I guess level that field, the baseball?
Well, we, we need the, the tractor that, that they were currently using is thirty doll, thirty, thirty years old, almost thirty years old. And the repairs, it's repaired, I believe were between five and six thousand. So at the voting's and grounds committee meeting, you know, we did decide to move forward with purchasing. Uh, it's heavy duty. It'll drag the baseball field, it'll drag the softball field, the infield's to get those ready for the season. And on any, uh, rough terrain, uh, it, it'll be, um, the tractor that they use to cut the grass and.
Is this the, how many estimates did you get?
The, a costar's price, you don't need to get.
I'm asking, did you look and see? I know there's other places where they sell these tractors to do the same job. I'm asking, did you get more, is this the only price that you received?
To my knowledge, this was the only one he, he got. I can ask him, he'll be here next week.
Is there a reason why we need to take action tonight?
So we, um, did, because I, we already ordered it, so.
You already ordered it?
I, I, I sent an email out a couple of weeks ago.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
You sure did, yeah.
Yeah.
No.
Didn't nobody call you for what? What are you asking her?
She didn't know about it, so we voted in our meeting, but they were supposed to call the other board members and they ratified at the meeting, so everybody's aware.
I sent an email out.
He sent an email asking all of us to.
Okay, well, she didn't get it, that's what I'm asking, because she did not know. That's why we let her see.
But he already purchased it, so we'll be voting.
Yeah, we, we did, we did vote on it in the meeting and everybody else got an email. All the votes were in the meeting.
This can just be your trip, but credit is yours.
Oh, nobody moved?
Did anybody move?
I moved.
I'll stop you.
Is this as a roll call?
Yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead, Justin. Make drive. Okay, okay, okay. Mrs., Ms. Gill?
Yeah.
Mrs. Bible?
Yes.
Mrs. Price Jeans?
Yes.
Ms. Kavala?
Yes.
Mrs. Kane?
Yes.
Mr. Flanagan?
No.
And Mrs. Stewart?
Yes, yes.
Um, number two, recommendation to approve contract renewals with Johnson Controls for a period of five years, beginning April first, twenty-twenty-one through and including March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six. And annual costs are five thousand forty dollars for the elementary school and seven thousand six hundred and ten dollars for the junior, senior high school.
This is for the sprinkler system and the fire alarms and they've been our vendor for, prior to the renovation.
They just updated those, right? All the sprinkler systems. So this is like a maintenance?
Yes, and Mr. Collins is very happy with them.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's me. Um, recommendation to approve the city of Alacopa to use the junior, senior high school parking lot for an electronics recycling event on Saturday, April twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-one, from ten AM to two PM.
Any questions? Any questions?
No.
All right, nothing from Capital Project Policy?
Um, pretty far, so reading, we also receiving the folders that were delivered, um, the policy of eight thirty-two for electronic signature. Do I need to actually read the policy now?
I don't, she, she just need to read the policy, does she?
No, no, no.
That's reading at home. You know where.
Okay, uh, just a few things under information. Uh, as you know, the basketball team, once they are in the semifinals, they play tomorrow night at South Allegheny, six o'clock. Also, uh, if there were, uh, any staff members that were not, uh, vaccinated yet, uh, they have the opportunity to have that done this week, um, at the Beaver Valley Intermediate Unit, so, um, if somebody chooses to be, um, vaccinated, they will have that opportunity if they haven't done so already, so.
Is it the double dose or single dose?
Uh, this, the Johnson Johnson's a single dose.
Single dose.
Then, uh, CTC update, Mrs. Kavala, anything?
Nothing special.
Mrs. Stewart, are you? Okay, then, uh, at your place, I just put the, the first week, uh, attendance for the, um, last week at the elementary school, um, the number of students that attended, uh, each day for, for your information.
Where's Group B?
For me?
There's Group B.
Group B? Oh.
I think it's, it's two per day, one to be Group B.
Okay, all right, I just noticed that. So the second column then would be the second, Group B and their Thursday, Friday.
So where is it listed?
The, the, the column to your right.
I think you wrote Group A twice.
The furthest column to your right would be Group B, it's a misprint.
Oh, okay, all right. I thought, oh, Mrs. Payton's here. Mrs. Knight, can you give us a, a brief, uh, overview of how things have been going?
Mr. Mott? Mr. Mott?
Yes.
Can you give us an update on how everything's been so far?
Yes, sir.
Yes, please.
Um, actually, I mean, if you look at those numbers, the first thing I saw was, I didn't think there was that many kids in the building. And what that means to me is the staff has been doing a great job. Uh, number one, the kids have been doing a great job. I'll start there. Um, they've come off the bus. I think over ninety percent of our children have had masks on. I think I've given out maybe one, I, Mrs. Smith, I think, helped me. I think maybe one in the first week. Um, they're all social distancing. They're all wearing their mask. Uh, every once in a while, just, some of the masks are a little big on them, so they have to pull it up over. Um, I'll be honest, I'm extremely proud of parents, students, teachers, uh, the faculty. Um, it, it, it is extremely smooth the first week, the first part of this week. Um, you know, I, it, transportation i- i- is going very well. Um, kids are behaving on the bus. I had one little incident on Tuesday morning, but that was it. I had one discipline issue, very minor, that was it. Um, cafeteria food is rolling out. Um, i- i- it's, it's becoming a, a well-oiled machine and, uh, I, I think it's great. Um, I can't say how, how proud I am of the, the teachers, the staff. Um, you know, everyone's pitching in. I, 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 I just, I'm, I'm very proud of them. They, they've done a great job. Uh, the kids are, are listening very well. Um, teaching's going on. Um, I think our biggest problems are some of the kids don't have Chromebooks and iPads and I get them to them pretty quickly. Um, get them switched out whenever they need it. Um, you know, teachers, it can be difficult teaching in person and to the live stream kids, um, as Mrs. Stewart, I'm sure you understand. Um, but they're doing it, you know, and, and, you know, I walk around pretty often and I see a lot of really good things going on. And, uh, every part of what we need to function as it's functioning, um, is happening. You know, and, and if there's an issue, you know, we take care of it very quickly, you know, and, uh, I, I, I mean, like I said, the kids are behaving very well. Very controlled environment and it's working very well. Yes, ma'am?
Yes, um, did you really think any kind of a life for, like, as far as the parents, like, taking the temperatures of the kids or, you have any issues with that?
No, I, I mean, sickness wise, we've had, I think our attendance has been really good. Uh, we had to send one child home, maybe two or three. I'd say single, I'd say less than five. Um, parents, no, I mean, we haven't had any issues with that, um, that I know of at this point. There's not been many kids in the nurse's room. Um, I think we had one child in isolation. It was picked up very quickly. Um, we actually took her off the bus, right to the nurse's office, right to isolation. Um, no, I mean, temperature wise, I, not many sick kids. And they're washing their hands and their bathroom schedule. I know Miss Shepherd wanted them to create their own bathroom schedule, so no one's in the hall at the same time. I mean, if you do see classes in the hall, number one, they're very small. Number two, it's succinct that they're not passing each other. Um, so that's working very well. And again, a, a teacher's really making this work. Um, I, I, I can't say enough about how well they've been making a lot of this work, so.
We need, you know, March, um, March twenty-fourth, we have a meeting, community engagement.
Okay.
With students coming in, and, I mean, like both the teachers.
Okay.
And parents, because they need to hear how it's going.
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
And that way, we will have some response from the high school also, but, um, well, that's March twenty-fourth for Black, Black.
Yeah.
And, and then he, you know, because the first thing a parent will say is that we don't know what's going on and we don't, so this meeting is just to let them know, you know, right now.
Yeah.
And some of us, that the kid, that the kid, to speak up on which is the best route for them each one. I think they have a twelfth grader, eleventh grader, tenth grader like that. They want to speak on how it affected them and
Sure.
what they need to do, but what you're saying, they didn't, parents need to know that, you know, because they felt that we didn't have a plan, so we need to have a plan.
Yep.
And it's, you know, like, um, Stewart's saying, we don't know until we put that plan into effect.
Right.
Whether it's gonna work. And it's saying, I know, it's gonna be like, you know.
Right, right.
This is not a perfect world here, but, um.
It's not a perfect world anymore.
It's, anyway, but I like how you're approaching and I like, um, now wish you would come on the twenty-fourth.
Sure.
About, about to so you can let us know that, you know, the safety and, um, Ms. Dr. Carbon, you have a, a slight paper here about, um, COVID and what's suspected for our school district. And I get some, a few copies of, copies of those to put out so that they'll know the parents, because their, uh, their main concern seems to be that they're not being told anything. And, um, like I told some of the parents, you have to come to the meeting to know anything, you know, or.
I have a question.
You're talking about the letters that were mailed home?
I know.
Is that what you're asking?
It's, it's that, they say they're not being told anything.
Okay.
So the reason why we want to come through with the community so that we can put it out there, they will see that we're addressing everything that's going on step by step for our community engagement meeting. So I wish the board, all of you guys, invited to come and maybe, um, you know, speak on some points that we need to speak on, like, you know, how you doing food, just to, you know, just to get them. Cause you know, they're saying that they don't know. That's what a lot of parents are saying. So, and I like what the elementary unit did.
Yeah.
They don't know, you know, what's going on as far as.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's definitely a team effort at the elementary. I mean, I, we, Mrs. Smith has helped us, Dr. Guzzi, Dr. Carbon. I mean, it's, it's all hands on deck and it's, it's, uh, I think we deserve more credit.
Yeah, me too.
For, for, uh, what we've done and what I've seen, um, and the, how prepared it's been. Uh, and again, anxiety, it's, it's something we've never dealt with before.
Right.
But, um, you know, I, it, it, it's, it's working well and, and, you know, the, the teachers move from classrooms, the kids stay. Um, you know, that was a concern, but they just have to adjust to the technology. Uh, and, and they're doing it.
Is that working better, Mr. Mott?
I think it is. I thi- I think because, I mean, I, I mean.
I don't need to put you on the spot.
No, 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 I, I mean, it, it just, it's the technology, like, everyone uses technology differently and you have it set up, how you have it set up.
Yeah.
You walk into another room and stuff in a different way, which creates an anxiety, um, because, oh my God, I have to set this up. I have to teach them, I have to get the live stream kids going. That's a lot of anxiety for teachers at first. And, and then they, they, they just start kind of, until they get that routine. You know, I, I've been in high school and elementary and elementary teachers are really routine about things, uh, which I understand and I like. Um, but, you know, that, that switching the rooms and going to different technology, you need to, well, wrestle the first, but it's fine.
Can you tell them about the thermometers that Nurse Judy got? The ones that they look into?
Oh, yeah, so, so Nurse Judy's gotten two, is it two at our building? Two? So it, you, you can walk up to it and it's like a, it's like a mini iPad at the top and it scans you and it reads your temperature automatically. Um, I, I mean, the biggest problem with the elementary. Uh, I, I mean, the biggest problem with the elementary kids is the little ones.
Can't reach it.
Down enough so that they might have to step up on something, we don't want them doing that. Um, but it's really cool, it measures the temperature like that.
Yeah.
Uh, and we, what we want to do is put them at the two entrances where they come in and, you know, if someone reads a high, you know, temperature, we would.
Stop them right there.
Yeah, stop them right there. But, um, you know, a- again, I, I think the parents are following the rules and doing what they're supposed to be doing because, you know, I, we've not seen many symptomatic, many sick children. You know, and like I said, the one that was, uh, really poor, like, I, we got her right off the bus immediately. Uh, so, you know, the thermometers are really cool, uh, if they're out or you want to come check them out and try it yourself, I try it every day.
So, um. Speaking of the thermometers, Nurse Judy had sent out.
The Kinza?
The Kinza thing?
Yes.
So I don't know if anybody signed up for that, but if you have that, when she records the kid needing in the elementary school or being sick in the office or being sent home, it tallies that number up for the buildings, so parents can see how many cases of kids.
Actually here.
Have actually been sick in the building with the kids and stuff.
Yeah, when they, when they sign up, they get a free thermometer and the dad's collected. It's a lot of manual entering themselves, but.
My question is, so the one isolation, um, what, what was the protocol? Like, what did you do?
Um.
Was it like the classroom form or the, the bus form?
For some reason, I, I, I think, I think what happened, because I'm not completely sure, is the parent called Nurse Judy and said, my child said she was sick, but I sent her anyway.
What?
Yeah, it was a stomach thing. Yeah, so.
Which is going around.
Yes.
Yeah.
So we, she told me and we figured out which bus and I got on the bus and I immediately saw her and pulled her off and took her right into isolation. Um, yeah, so.
It's definitely going around.
Yeah, so, but, uh, you know, I, 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 that's, you know, what we did, that was one of our first instances, uh, Nurse Judy does a great job with that stuff, um, she's very succinct about things and.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
The kiddos that have gone to the church, since the bus, they have to wait for all the buses to come, because there are any ways somebody can take attendance before they leave the building because they're not getting to the church in time for home runs. My kids will be in a lot of accidents every time.
Well, they shouldn't be. No, they shouldn't because, because I know Ms. Shepherd makes an announcement if the bus is late, and that means it's not their fault.
Yeah.
So, but, yeah.
This week, yeah, last week they were asked, asked, and they're home on teachers. Can you?
Yeah, because they came, they came in late.
I'm on it.
Friday, they, they, they missed the bus. There was something that went on with the bus because half the kids that are stopped, missed, and half of them didn't, and the kids that caught the bus said that the bus was there at eight forty-five instead of nine o'clock like it was supposed to be.
Yeah, and, and keep in mind, the first days are always like this.
Yeah.
But I will say this, uh, on Tuesday, we had them out the door and everyone was gone, it, I think it was like three forty. That's, that's pretty good, because usually it takes us.
Are they getting out later or no?
No.
No?
No.
No.
Okay, it just seems like they're coming home a little later.
No. It depends, because at, at first, again.
Is it the bus route? Could it be the bus route? I don't know, I would just say, it just seems like, but I'll just call roads, I'll talk to them.
But, yeah, Tuesday, we, and they, I mean, they're following so many rules, we can get them going, I mean, not that they don't, but just with minimal kids and getting them out the door, um, we, we could, we get them out pretty quickly, not that we don't want them to go home, but just to get them home, you know, and get them out of the building so we can, you know, start cleaning. Also, maintenance staff, I, um, wanted to thank them too, because I was just down there, as I walked out the door, I could hear them spraying the Clorox machine too, so.
Are we seeing any issues with the kiddos coming off days not logging in?
Yeah.
We are. Is anybody reaching out to the parents to let them know that they need to log in?
Yes.
Okay. Only because I, I know, like, with the kids, like, when we're playing basketball, some of the students have mentioned, well, I don't want to log in, I'm sorry. I'm like, you know, you have to log in now?
Yes, yes, and, and, and the biggest problem is when they reach out, sometimes we get zero contact. So, and then they keep trying, there's zero contact, and then now it's stopped. I mean, you know, and it's, I don't know how much more we can do, you know, we've given devices, we contacted them. I'm constantly, you know, working, or everyone is, Ms. Shepherd, myself, we're, we're constantly working with them, um, on Chromebooks, on iPads, uh, exchanging iPads, exchanging Chromebooks. Uh, you know, giving them the benefit of the doubt, just giving them the Chromebook so they can get on there to, you know, give us the feedback we can, um, you know, so, yeah, it's definitely.
That's the kind of thing we need to know before we have a meeting. If, ho- hopefully the parents do attend the meeting and some of the teachers, so the teachers can, um, express what's going on, then as far as, like you said, someone not, you know, logging on.
Right.
And they need to know that, so, I mean.
Yeah.
I just had a few friends that gave me the telephone, they want me to call them, let them know, but Dr. Dr. Carbone, did you notify any of the teachers, could they come?
I talked to Mrs. Linder, she said she was gonna put it out to the staff, I'll follow up.
And that, we just want, we don't want it to be said anymore that they don't be contacted, they don't know what's going on, somehow we don't know what's going on. But if we're all together at one place and one spot, we all want to hear the same thing.
Right.
You know, so.
Class Dojo, where we used to elementary, there's a lot of communication on there, a lot. I, 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 that's, if you look at our blended model, the first place we go for our technology is, is Class Dojo and everything stems from there. So, I mean, if you keep reinforcing that, um, that i- is definitely something they can access right on their phone, right, like, only if parents use it, um, but, you know, you can message right away.
Do you guys have any way of keeping track, like, if, say you're trying to get in contact with a parent, that's right, if she, the kiddo, not show up, like, whatever, does anybody keep a track of, we tried calling this many times now?
The, the teachers do, um, we've asked for that, um, I think Ms. Shepherd did today, she asked for, who are the kids you haven't talked to or haven't, and when was your last contact? So, yeah, you were trying to build a spreadsheet right now for that.
And you gotta send something out, writing to the one who you can't, as it would.
Uh, yeah, I, as of right now, I'm not sure, because the first part is to see who it is, um, you know, but I, I, again, you know, I'll assume eventually, yeah.
I can tell you that one's happening as well.
Okay.
Those things are so much easier, because, yeah, I told them, it's, it's because you're in front of the teacher, you're, uh,
Yes.
you have somebody there to constantly help you with, so, he, he is.
In person, in person learning is much better than live stream. I, I, I do like live stream instruction, but in person is.
And I can say, as a mother of boys, boys' attention spans are about this big.
Yes.
Yeah, my story is not the same, mine's not, but he's there.
Yeah, he's working.
He's working.
See, check all the time.
He tells, thank you, I appreciate that, thank you.
Mrs. My finger, you've been right, you know, that, thank you, you guys are doing a good job, helping things, but that's good to hear.
We appreciate your support, so.
I just want to make them aware, you know, so they can't say, I mean, we want to stay in contact, whether we want to let them know, you know, how it's affecting the kids and what, you know, what's in the back, you know, so.
Yeah, I mean, again, I, I will say, I think we anticipated a lot of problems, but I'm not seeing a lot of problems. I'm, I'm really not. I mean, I'm not saying there's not any problems, but, um, again, I, I, the teachers are, are making it work. Maintenance staff is keeping it clean, you know, and, uh, it's, it's, uh.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Mott.
Yeah, no problem, thank you.
Keep up the good work.
So just real quick, so the high school's ready to go?
Yeah.
Everything's ready to go? And they start Monday?
Monday, yeah.
Do you want me to do this building grounds next Wednesday?
I don't, I don't, it doesn't matter to me.
I'll wait. I'll do it next Wednesday. You wanted a building grounds report, do you want me to just do it next Wednesday?
It's up to you.
I'll do it next Wednesday.
You sure?
Yeah, everybody's probably ready to go.
Do a motion to adjourn?
I motion to adjourn.
I second.